Good evening, everyone. Can we please get comfortable? Welcome to the January 6th Board of Trustees Meeting. And Happy New Year. May we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Camille, will you please call the roll?
Preston Gachion.
Present.
Preston Taylor.
Present.
Mary Ann.
Present.
Present and trustee, trustee Danny Lang is not feeling well today, so he's not in. And our first order of business today is the appointment of Melvin Banks Jr. as a police officer in Tuckahoe. So I'd like to ask Mr. Banks and family to come forward. Whoever's going to hold the Bible for you? Repeat after me. I, Melvin Banks.
I, Melvin Banks.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
To uphold the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of police officer in the village of Tuckahoe.
And that will dutifully,
Faithfully.
Discharge the duties of the police officers in the village of Tuckahoe to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations, Officer Banks. Welcome.
Oh, there, Mr. Banks.
Good evening. Good evening. I'd like to congratulate Melvin Jr. It's great to see this full circle from a child growing up in the community to now being a police officer. We're very proud of you. You've done a phenomenal job raising this boy. We look forward to a happy and healthy career for you. And I know you're going to be a shining star. You're going to do well. So good luck to you. And we wish you a great career.
Is there, is there anyone in the audience that would like to offer some congratulatory remarks to Mr. Banks Jr.? How about on Zoom? Okay, Elaine, I see you getting up.
Elaine Provenzano, Levimer Street, Tuckahoe, New York. I'm formerly a Pagaroli. So I know that a lot of us went to school together at Tuckahoe High School. And it's wonderful to see a new generation. You must be very proud. And we're very excited to have you protecting us in the community. So congratulations.
Is there anyone else here? Sure.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Oh, good evening.
My name is Melvin Banks Jr. I'm his uncle. I went to kindergarten in this building. I don't think there's too many people in Tuckahoe now that know as much about it as Lovely and I. Went to kindergarten here. I went to Tuckahoe High School. And we had baseball. We played baseball down the park. Down there, which I noticed there's none of it. Now, I lived in Yonkers for 40 years before I moved back there. And this police station was around by Oak Street. I was lovely. How many, you think, the many people out here remember this town? My cousin was the first black police chief, Henry Norman. Yep. I remember when Bova. How many, how many people in here remember Bova was chief? But I hope my nephew will turn out to be a good prospect. I'm quite sure he will be. Good, he's dependable. Because he comes from a dependable family. Thank you.
Amen. Anyone else would like to offer congratulatory remarks? Is there anyone on Zoom? Sure.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
I wish them all the best. And I also want to say greetings to Eddie.
Oh.
Have you ever met Eddie?
Absolutely. We all have met Eddie.
We were on the other day at this police station. But unfortunately, he was home with the chief. So I brought him some Eddie cookies.
Oh, nice. Thank you.
Well, I'd like to say I definitely didn't go to elementary school here. And this wasn't mine. But I did have the privilege of going to school with Melvin. He was here older than me in Tuckahoe. And I knew him for the majority of my life. And we're very fortunate to be hiring him, having him. And good luck.
Good.
After they've made me old and everything, I guess I better say something. But really, I'm very proud of this moment for this family. Melvin, the father, is a very rich man. So I want him to write to know that. Hiding his body, I know. Such a hardworking family. I've known the Banks for a very long time, even though they're older than I am. Some of them. But really, congratulations. And you know that I am the speaker for diversity. I think there is strength in diversity. I remember Henry Norman. I remember Joe Yancey. And how proud, we had to be in the black community that they were in, on the police force. So it's very enlightening and, and a great pleasure and a great deal of pride for me to welcome this young Banks to our police force, which is the best in the nation. Thank you.
Nice. And yes, and since his dad is rich, he's got the right name.
Good evening. My name is Margaret Banks. I'm his mom. I'd just like to take the opportunity and first give him thanks to God for his opportunity to be able to help others in a different way. And that's why we always try to teach him that. That so many different ways you can help others. And this is one of the ways he can. And I just want to say congratulations, Melvin.
Nice. Anyone on the board like to offer some words?
You have a, you had a really impressive interview. So it was really nice to meet you, Mr. Banks. And you know, a lot of people have had a lot of nice things to say about you. So we have a lot of expectations for you. But you'll have all of our support. So welcome.
Yes. Trustee Taylor?
Melvin, congratulations. My family has been here many, many years, just like Lovely and the Banks family from Clemens Avenue back in the day. But I watch you grow up to become an awesome young man. You have been a stellar young man your whole career, your whole life. I have never heard anything out of line about you. Your parents, I'm sure, are proud of the young man you've become, strength in God in your life. And I think you will do an awesome job on this police force. And you will thrive like you have been throughout your life. Congratulations.
Deputy Mayor?
So the family resemblance in the Banks family is very strong. It's very strong. And it's a, it's a good reminder that you are carrying the torch here, right? You are carrying the mantle of responsibility. This is a bastion of respect in this, in this community, your family, as is being a Tuckahoe police officer. And you know, we get, we're very lucky. We have the most amazing people who apply to be Tuckahoe police officers. And our jobs are very difficult in choosing. But we are promising you, we are offering you the best candidate here in Mr. Banks. And so I am very excited to see what the next 25 years has in store for you.
Yeah, and I echo the deputy mayor's sentiment. When we interviewed with Mr. Banks, he's really, really impressive. And what impressed me the most was what his mom said. He has a heart of service. So everything that he talked about was in serving his community. And you are a son of Tuckahoe. And you just have another opportunity to just serve in a different way. So welcome. You are going to be a great addition to our already amazing police department. So congratulations. And if you'd like to say a few words, you can. And I'm sure you, you're your father's dad, so you're not at a loss for words.
I know how to handle it a little bit better, though. First of all, I want to thank you everyone so much. No idea how much this means to me, you know? I take a lot of pride in my family, my friends, my neighbors. Because I look at myself honestly as the child that the village raised. And, you know, there's a lot of people that I think about every day. You know, my, my Uncle Kenny, my grandma. I'm sorry.
It's okay.
And, you know, Mr. Peabody, Rose, Mr. TT. I never forget how much they instilled in me, how much they love me, and how to always pass on the feelings that I feel for them with other people who might not have that luxury. You know, a lot of people don't have the luxury to talk to someone that loves them and cares for them. You know, and it's scary to know that. Because there's a lot of good people in this world, in this village, that don't really have an ear for someone to really, so they can speak to. And I've made sure in my life, I don't really care if it's 20, 30, 40, whoever it may be, that I can be there for whoever without anything getting back. Because I just feel like that's what it's supposed to be. So I just want to thank you all again, everyone. Those of you in Tuckahoe, you helped raise me. I take it very, very seriously. And I plan on making sure my career is not just obviously representing myself, representing all of you and your kids, grandchildren, whoever it may be. Thank you.
Wonderful young man. Before we do our, we're going to have our auditor come forward to do a summary of our financial audit. I'd like to have a presentation. We had, I had the pleasure of attending the Westchester Senior Hall of Fame luncheon to have seniors in Westchester County inducted into the seniors' hall of fame. And we had two candidates that were chosen out of Tuckahoe. Not, not a surprise. We have a lot of wonderful people who live here. And so we wanted to honor them here at Village Hall so that the residents and their neighbors could also share in the joy of their, their induction into the senior hall of fame. And so I'd like to ask Nancy Hytenor Day to come up first to receive a proclamation from the village. And Deputy Mayor Kara Cronin will present it to you.
Oh, hi, everybody. So this proclamation is to congratulate Nancy Hytenor Day on being inducted into the Westchester Citizens' Hall of Fame for all the outstanding work that she does. And really, in helping me as the senior liaison, she has been an incredibly fruitful source of information and help. And I call her all the time and say, what am I doing? How do I help? What do I need to do? And she always has an answer for me. So thank you very much, Nancy. And this is for you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Sure, you can say something. Yeah.
I'd like to thank Mayor Andino. Always thank you because you're such a great leader for not just Tuckahoe, but throughout Westchester and the state. You really are. And I have a special shout out for Deputy Mayor Cronin for nominating me. I just want to say that sometimes you just never know when, who's watching you. And so you always, and it was just an honor. It was really an honor. I, I appreciate it very much that Mayor Andino, Deputy Mayor Cronin, and trustee Taylor took time out of their busy schedules to join me at the ceremony on Friday, December 6. It was truly a day to remember. And their presence at the event made it even more special. Again, Tuckahoe, thank you very, very much.
Congratulations. Can I ask Vito Pinto to come forward? Vito Pinto was also inducted into the seniors' hall of fame. And trustee Gachion will present it to him.
All right. Vito, this is on behalf of the village for your years of dedication and service, not only here in Tuckahoe, but throughout Westchester County and beyond. And you know, it started even before you went in the Navy, before the 175-plus missions that you, that you flew while you were in the Navy. You came back, you were a teacher, you were an educator, you were a counselor. You went on to serve on this board here, serve on the board in Eastchester, serve in the Board of Legislators at the county, and then went on to run the Veteran's Service Agency. We could go on and on and on. Everybody knows Vito. Thank you for everything that you've done. You absolutely deserve this. And congratulations on your nomination. Thank you.
Mr. Pinto, would you like to say a few words?
Just going to say a few words. I've been warned, don't get chatty. But I have to say to Melvin and this crowd, I too went to school here at Tuckahoe kindergarten through the fifth, sixth grade. And it was truly an honor to graduate from the Main Street School to go on to the Tuckahoe Junior High School, Senior High School, and then to go to Oswego for a degree. And when I did, I ended up going in the Navy, spent eight years before I got a medical discharge. And I taught at Tuckahoe first shop, Mr. Nash, and went up and on beyond in a guidance counselor. And Tuckahoe has always been in my heart. And I want to thank Senator Shelley Mayer for nominating me along with Josh Gachion. And it wouldn't have been possible without my family. My wife Sally also went to school here with me. She was ahead of me because she knew stenography. But we ended up with my four children going to Eastchester because I lived in the Tuckahoe part that was the Eastchester School District. So we've seen it all, we've done it all. And we've always tried to do the best that we could to serve the people, not only of Tuckahoe and Eastchester and the county, but the statewide. And I really thank you for this honor. And I have to say, it was truly a wonderful event at the Marriott in Terrytown. Thank you very much, folks. And I just was a little bit behind him, so don't.
You're welcome. I really love it when we acknowledge and recognize the, the good works that residents are doing in Tuckahoe because it's nice to get your flowers while you're still here. So congratulations to you both again. Benny's okay, he's okay. So we're going to be moving on to the auditor's report. And I'm going to ask Jeff Shaver to come forward. However, if the Banks family would like to go and celebrate, you may do so now. Otherwise, you're going to be here for a while. Just saying. More than an hour. So it's up to you. You're welcome to stay, obviously. But I'd like for anyone who wants to leave to do so now so we're not disrupting the meeting in the middle. Have a good night and welcome. Okay. This is a family reunion. We're going to be here a while. That's the fun part of the meeting, Jeff.
Yes. No one can clear out a room better than an auditor. Every meeting I go to.
That is so true.
Good evening. Again, my name is Jeff Shaver. Happy to be here to present the results of the audit for the fiscal year ended May 31st, 2024. I'm going to start, if you have the financial statements in front of you, take you through some of the book here. The first page after the table of contents is what's known as the independent auditor's report. And this is the only part of the financial statements that belongs to us as auditors. The rest of it is the property of the village of Tuckahoe. We have rendered what's known as an unmodified opinion on these financial statements. And that's also referred to as a clean opinion. And that's the most favorable opinion that the village can receive. What that means is the numbers in the financial statements that I'm going to be presenting to you this evening are fairly stated in all material respects. It doesn't mean that the numbers are favorable. It doesn't mean that they're unfavorable. It just means that they're fairly stated. We as auditors had a team of four auditors here back in October, November. We spent a week here on site going through all the records and ultimately preparing the, the financial statements. And it was, of course, reviewed by your treasurer and your village manager. And we issued the report last month in December. We received everything that we needed in order to render the unqualified opinion. The books were in good order. Very few audit adjustments were required. So thank you to the treasurer, the village manager, and the team for kind of having, you know, making our job a little bit easier. In terms of financial results, I'd like to start kind of in the middle of the book, pages 54 and 55. And this is the general fund, schedule of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance, budget, and actual. On page 54, we have 2024 results. On page 55, we have 2023 results. You'll see it's a four-column presentation. The original budget would be as adopted by the trustees. The final budget would encompass any board-approved transfers or amendments to the budget, followed by your actual results. The variance column is the difference between your final budget and your actual results. So you can see in terms of revenues, the budget, anticipated revenue collections of $14,461,000. That number was revised upwards to $15,635,000, while the actual revenues were $15,738,000, some $103,000 greater than the revised budget. On the expenditure side of the budget, you'll see expenditures were anticipated to be $13,870,000. And that's before transfers out to other funds. That number was revised to $14,853,000, while the actual expenditures were $14,724,000, representing a favorable variance or underspending of the budget by approximately $128,000. You can see when we add the revenue surplus of $103,000 to the expenditure surplus of $128,000, it brings us to what I refer to as the total budgetary surplus for the fiscal year. And that number was $235,000. So you, between additional revenue collections and underspending of the budget, you did $235,000 better than your revised spending plan. However, and that's the number in the right-hand column, third number up. When the budget was adopted, fund balance or surplus was used to balance the budget. So the revenue, estimated revenues were less than the appropriations by $150,000. Said in another way, if you collected every dollar of your budget and spent every dollar of your budget, your fund balance would drop by that $150,000. Okay? Not only did you not use the $150,000, you were able to do a little bit better than that. The difference between the two figures becomes at the actual increase in fund balance. So the difference between $235,000 and $150,000 is $85,000. And that's the increase in the general fund fund balance for fiscal year ended June, May 31st, 2024. The general fund started the year with fund balance of $2,641,000, ends the year $2,726,000. Of that $2,726,000, $100,000 has been used to balance the '24-'25 budget, the budget we're in right now. That's $50,000 less than what you did the previous year. And that leaves what we refer to as unassigned fund balance or residual after you subtract the total fund balance and all the other categories that are created. Residual fund balance of $2,626,000. That's available for use at the discretion of the board. That's up from $2,491,000 as of fiscal year ended May 31st, 2023. That figure represents approximately 18% of your expenditure budget, which is considered a healthy fund balance. I'd also like to take you through some of the bonded debt that's outstanding. On page 35, you'll see a summary of all the general obligation bonds outstanding. The last bond issuance was done in 2021, $3,160,000. There's currently $2,645,000 left on that bond. And added to the other bonds outstanding, $6,190,000 outstanding. The total obligation or annual obligation is about $900,000 or so will be paid down in the 2025 fiscal year end. So certainly a manageable debt load for a village of your size. Those are all the prepared remarks I had for this evening. If there's anything you'd like me to go through in greater detail or answer any questions you might have, I'd be happy to do that.
Yeah. Jeff, can you just go over on page nine, the pie chart that, you know, has the breakdown of the revenue? that, you know, has the breakdown of the revenue? There's a 14%, 14.7% for the non-property taxes. Can you just give residents a summary of what is included in that category?
Absolutely. So this is on page nine. There's four charts on page nine, but the one you're referring to is a pie chart of all the revenues for the village-wide. This isn't just your general fund. This is the entire village and broken up into these categories and the percentage of that category to the total. The non-property taxes represents three items. And they are the non-property tax distribution from the county or the sales tax distribution. That's the largest in that category at $1.9 million. Your utilities, gross receipts taxes, $273,000. And your hotel occupancy tax at $209,000. So that's the total of those figures adding up to that 14.7%.
Thank you. Does the board have any questions?
Yes. So I ask you this every time you come, but I think it's good for the edification of the village and those who may be new here. Can you just discuss a little bit about what the, why the fund balance is so important and why 18% is a good or healthy fund balance?
So it's kind of like the rainy day fund, if you will, or, you know, cash in the bank available for any emergencies that may arise. It also is available for cash flow purposes. For instance, the village does have some capital projects outstanding where there's some grants. Those grants, they need to be laid out in cash. The village is cash before the state or federal government is going to reimburse you, and that takes some time. So that fund balance serves as a way to not have to go out to bond just to advance before you get that grant money. And it's a sign of strong fiscal health. So to have a low fund balance would be a bad indicator for the state and be a bad indicator for the bond market when you were to go out for a bond. The state recommends kind of what I would, I call it a floor, the way they describe it, or they consider you potentially fiscal stressed if you fall below like that 10%. So you're clearly above the 10% figure. So I say anything between that 10%, 20%, generally speaking, depending on the municipality, is, you know, a good place to be.
Thank you. And doesn't it also help with, when we do want to bond, to have a better interest rate?
Absolutely. So, you know, if you go out to bond, you typically would get a rating by Moody's or S&amp;P. And that's one of the things that they're going to look at. If you have a low fund balance, you're going to generally have a lower bond rating and pay a higher interest rate on your bonds. So the fund balance will serve as, to save the village money when it does go out to bond.
Yeah. And if the village residents recall, you know, we had a double A-plus bond rating, and part of the reason why we did get such a good bond rating was like our credit score, I call it, for people, you know, the laypeople like me understand that better. Our credit rating is better because we have a good, healthy fund balance and our fiscal practices are sound, so. Is there anything else that anybody on the board would like to ask? Okay. Thank you so much for this process. And I also want to thank Ryan, who's in the back, our treasurer, for his hard work putting this together and just keeping our books intact. And David Burke for constantly pushing back when we say we want, we want, we want. So, thank you very much, Jeff.
It was a pleasure to be here.
We appreciate it. Yes, go Tuckahoe. We are in a good place. So the next order of business. David, is there anything you want to say after the auditors?
In regards to the audit?
Yep.
Yeah, I just want to say now, before Ryan leaves.
Yeah, Ryan left.
He already walked out the door. There's a lot of numbers in here. There's a lot of work that's done in regards to this audit. And a big thanks to our village treasurer, Ryan Widda, who really leads the charge on this, works with the auditors for a full week, providing them everything they need. So really a big thank you to Ryan for all this. And that's really it.
And to hear the auditor say, you know, everything was in order, it was easy to access, you know, is really, we probably take it for granted here because, you know, we have good resources, we have good staff. But I hear of other municipalities and other organizations where it's not always so easy for the auditor to audit because things are scattered. And that's generally an indication of some trouble. So thank you very much, Ryan, for keeping everything in order. Okay. Good night. So we still have the public hearing open to consider the modifications to the code related to short-term rentals. We are still waiting to hear about some legislation. There have been some complaints coming our way about possible Airbnb's in the community. So we are hoping to be able to resolve this quickly so that we can put some measures in place to be able to safeguard the quality of life for residents. So I'll keep you posted on that, but the public hearing remains open. And I'd like a motion to adopt the minutes of December 2nd meeting.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? And that will take us to the first opportunity to address the board on any agenda items only. If there's anyone here that would like to address the board on any agenda items, you may do so now. Sure. Sure. You should come up to the mic. Just your name and.
Forgive me if I missed something, just a quick question.
Sure.
Is the audit report going to be posted on the website?
Absolutely. So you'll find all the year's audit reports there. You got it. And again, and if anyone has any questions, when you do get a chance to review it, you know, feel free to reach out to any board member. You can also call the village and ask to speak to the village administrator if you have any questions. And we'll be happy to, you know, give you any further information if you need it. Anybody else want to address the board on any agenda items? Anyone on Zoom? Okay. So that will take us to resolution number one, authorizing the surplus of the Chevy Silverado pickup for sale to the highest bidder. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you, board. And also, may I have a motion to pay the bills, authorizing the approval of vouchers in the amount of $503,612.86?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, and that will take us to departmental reports. So Chief, I know you're not feeling great today. Sorry, we're going to drag you through this a little bit. Then you can go rest, maybe get some rest tomorrow.
Thank you, Mayor. Hope everyone had a great holiday season. Police-wise, crime was low in the village. Statistics are showing great numbers. We're going to be producing a year-end report shortly and putting that out to the public. Overall, though, the village was vibrant in the downtown areas for nighttime restaurant goers. So it was really nice to see. It was like, we haven't seen that many people come since before COVID, so. I'd like to also announce the passing of Patricia Giuliano. She was a crossing guard for us for many years. She was the wife of Angelo Giuliano, who was a former DPW employee. They were a big fixture in the community. I want to remind everybody about the snow zone enforcement. We've been lucky so far. We haven't had a harsh winter. I just want to remind everyone that the snow zone enforcement starts at the beginning of a snowfall until 12 hours after the precipitation ends. Also, to the business and store owners, they are still required to maintain the sidewalks of ice in nights like this where it can potentially freeze over or any type of pedestrian hazard that is caused by snow or ice. I'm going to go with my crime tip of the month now. I have some items later to present. We've seen an uptick in senior fraud throughout the county. Hasn't happened here yet. But we will be speaking to the seniors on Thursday regarding new fraud techniques that are being done to seniors throughout the community in Westchester. Again, for the seniors watching, Con Edison will never call you and say they're going to turn your heat off. And Viola Water will never call you to turn the water off. Those are just some of the crimes that we're seeing. And never let anyone into your home who's requesting you see a meter or talk to you. Always call the police. If you have any doubt, always call the police. That's what we're here for. So that's what I have for now. We have a whole round of training coming up. We're going to do our in-service police training starting in January. We also work in conjunction with Westchester County for additional training at no cost to us. So this year is going to be consistent of a lot of training, and usually it's cost-free to us. We diligently look for cost-free training. In the end of January, will we have drone training for our officers on the tactical team? So that will be exciting. I think it's a cutting-edge technology. We've already purchased a drone last year. It's not too expensive, but we do need to certify our officers. And drones can really be productive in saving time and doing searches for missing people or anything that could be dangerous to our officers. So we look forward to that. And graduating, we're going to be sending five officers. So does any, board members have any questions for me?
There was just one thing, Chief, that, I mean, we talked about it, but there were a few residents that were still asking questions about all the drones that were flying around. Do you have any information you could offer people?
Sure. We did get reports from the federal government regarding it. Most of it that we had got reported on was, a lot of it, as you see, a lot of it was hype, right? So you haven't heard the news talking about it. There are drones out there, and they're commercial drones. However, a lot of it was recognized as being either airplanes or just normal drone activity. We did not see anything really over the village too much that was confirmed. For a while, when it got really hyped up, there was a reporting center in Westchester County. But overall, at this point, drone technology is really on the cutting edge. And overall, as a small municipality, there's not much we can do regarding a drone overhead from us. It's more of an FAA enforcement-type issue. However, we are aware of it. And looking forward, I think it was an eye-opening experience to the public to see how susceptible we are to these drones in the event of somebody wants to harm us. Overall, though, there was nothing found that these drones were doing any type of harm. Plus, they were lit up like Christmas trees in the sky, so.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Superintendent Frank DeMarco?
Hi, board.
Frank.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
It's been a while since I've been here, so glad to be back. I've got a lot of catching up to do here. But I also want to begin by welcoming Mr. Banks' appointment tonight. As you know, his father had worked for us at DPW for many, many years. So the whole family is just a respectable family. So welcome. There's a couple of things I want to talk about tonight. Number one is the Christmas tree placement. I know Christmas is over, people are placing their trees out. Please remove all the lights, the tencils, the balls, everything that goes on these trees. Because if they're left on there, those trees are contaminated, and we can't compost these trees. So we have to disperse of them differently. So we actually just throw them in the garbage. Do not place them in a plastic bag, please. I know people, when they want to escort this tree out of their home, they're getting droppings of these little needles everywhere or so. But when you place it at the curb, please just remove the plastic bag. And place it out at curbside for Thursday pickup. Now I want to go into snow and ice strategies that we have here at DPW in Tuckahoe. And the same goes for a lot of other municipalities in Westchester County. But a lot of people don't really understand how historically salt was placed and ice control has been done. But historically, DPW would drop dry calcium chloride on the roads. And what we would do is just disperse over the entire road. So as cars were driving over them, they would disperse over to the curb. So every hour or so, you would have to drop calcium chloride to make it effective or even have it on the road. And you would have to, and historically, workers would have to wait hours before a storm until it starts because we had no clue when storms would start. And that would cost taxpayers, of course, additional dollars. Today's methods, we make our own liquid brine at DPW. We take calcium chloride, and we have, it's a calculated type of mixture. And we have the machine to make our own calcium chloride that we had purchased over the years. But we had purchased liquid calcium chloride and cost-effective, and now we're making it. And what that would do is, three days before a storm event, as long as the roads are dry, we take this liquid calcium chloride and spray it throughout the roads. So if people are driving by, you could see these white lines, not only here in Tuckahoe, but throughout a lot of municipalities in Westchester. These white lines are liquid calcium chloride. So what this liquid calcium chloride does, it actually breaks the bond between the road and the snow. So when the snow falls and there's no liquid calcium chloride, that snow sticks to the ground. So what happens when you have the calcium chloride placed into the ground, it breaks that bond. So people have noticed that today, we didn't displace any salt in the road. We placed calcium chloride. We didn't need to place any salt into road. So that was a cost-saving to us as well. And again, it lasts up to three days. And again, with knowing that now we have something to protect the road and the bond is broken, we don't have employees waiting hours for it to snow. So once it snows or we get a heavy predicted snowfall, they would start trickling in and prepare the equipment for a snowfall, saving many hours of labor at DPW. Also, I just want to touch base that a lot of our trucks have onboard computers that control the displacement of salt on the road. That computer checks lane miles, the speed of the truck, the amount of salt required, and especially weather conditions. What this computer does is that we now don't displace dry calcium chloride on the roads anymore. We inject a liquid calcium chloride onto the dry calcium chloride, and it becomes effective immediately. So once calcium chloride has wetted, it has an immediate effect on a road. So what it does is now that it's wet, it's not dispersing all over the road. We create a sludge, and it drops into the lane of the road. So now we're containing the salt and maximizing the amount of salt that we've been putting down. So this data is retrieved and used for further research and sustainably manage the salt usage in the future. We've also tested beet juice over the years in conjunction with our liquid brine. And we've also researched spent beer from Broken Bow that was given to us, mixed with our liquid brine.
That's what I smelled.
Yeah. So again, there's a lot of research and development that goes into our snowfalls every year, our preparations for our snowfall. And all of this is to protect our waterways. Don't forget, we have the Bronx River right here. And all the salt and everything that we place on this road ultimately goes into our waterways. And limits the amount of salt displaced, and obviously a savings to all. That's all I have. Any questions?
Thank you, Frank. Good information for the residents. Swarish, Swarish Peshnanda, the director of the library. I have to make sure I say who's doing the report because I've gotten scolded a few times by residents. They're like, you just have people go up there and talk. Why don't you say who they are, so?
Good evening, everyone, and a happy new year. I can't believe today's two months we moved to our new renovated building. If you haven't been to the library, please come and visit us. So we are back to all our programs, some special programs I like to mention for adult summer, adult, sorry, summer reading, that's too quick. We are doing a memo writing workshop, which Elaine is going to do it. We took some couple of months' break from that, so it's going to be on Thursday, January 9th at 1:00 p.m. Also, mystery book club, which is Wednesday, January 15. And something new we started. We offer last year for the ukulele classes for the children. And this time, we are going to offer for adults. So if you are interested in learning this, please come and join us. It's for beginners. If you're seasonal, then it's good. And it's just more like a fun. And we have ukuleles available at the library. So these are, these classes are going to be on Friday, January 17th and 24th at 1:00 p.m. We are going to offer two classes a month. So please check our website and sign up for the program. And we have our regular Tuesday Tai Chi class, 9:00 a.m., January 7, 21. We have meditation. Every Friday at 9:00 a.m., we have chair yoga, which is very popular. We get almost 20 to 23 people every session. We have mahjong on Tuesday, knitting club, and ESL classes are coming back again, January 22nd. 22nd and 29th. And we also offer tech help, one-on-one, so you can book a session for 30 minutes and you have to call the library to make an appointment. It's on Thursdays, starts at 2:00 a.m. And for teens, now we have a new teen room, so we are going to start in game night, which is going to be on Wednesday, January 8th at 6:00 p.m. And Dungeon and Dragon, it's going to be Monday, January 7th, so please come. We have for teens programs and also always the snacks will be provided for them. We have children, graphic novel, book club, we have winter craft, lagoos, and storytime, which are popular, Tuesday, Friday storytime. And we have puppet storytime, which is on Thursday, January 16 at 11:00 a.m. And for Chinese New Year, we have a special Lunar New Year storytime with Miss Ginger in the community center on Friday, January 24th, and bilingual storytime Friday, January 31st. So we have all these wonderful program and everything is free. Please come and join, or if you have any question, give us a call.
Thank you, Swadish. Thank you. I love Tuckahoe. We applaud people. Do you have anything? David?
Yeah. I do know that you're going to mention a few things, but I did want to say kind of a thank you and tell a quick story. On New Year's Eve this year, we had a flooding incident here at Village Hall. And while many people are out celebrating or having a drink or whatever they may do on New Year's Eve, we had this condition and within less than an hour, multiple people were here on site from the police department to Mr. DeMarco was out with, you know, at dinner to Johnny Reichel and Elliot, and our Assistant Building Inspector actually got his son down here to do some repairs for us. So it was just kind of a global thank you to everyone. When something pops up like this, there's a lot of people in this village who are just willing to kind of just stop what they're doing, stop their celebrations and help out. So just, just want to acknowledge that.
That's awesome. Yeah. That does warrant an applause. Gary, anything? Okay. So that, just a reminder, next month, our village board work session, which is open to the public, is on February 6th at 7:00 p.m. in the mayor's office, and the village board meeting is on February 10th at 7:00 p.m. right here in the meeting room. And that'll take us to Board of Trustee member reports. So trustee Gachion.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We'll start with the History Committee, and I want to join them in expressing their deepest condolences to Eastchester Town historian Richard Forliano and his family, who lost their, his wife and their mother Faith last month. Our hearts go out to him and his family. And speaking of Richard Forliano, he will be presenting on the impact of the American Revolution on the historic town of Eastchester through the perspective of her residents. This is January 19th at 2:00 p.m. Eastchester Public Library, or you can join on Zoom. The Facebook page for the History Committee is up to 1,400 members. I think it's because Nick and Laney and Lois have been doing those TikTok dances and posting them up there for folks. If you have not friended the page, friend the page. They put a lot of good information on there, so everything they have is up there. And they meet on Wednesdays at 9:30 a.m. right here at Village Hall. The Historic Preservation Committee met on December 18th, and as of 2:30 this afternoon, they did not have a meeting scheduled yet for January, and Gary's giving me the no, so they do not have one scheduled for January. Veterans, December 7th, we had a nice memorial service in honor of Pearl Harbor Day. I believe it was the 84th anniversary of Pearl Harbor Day. And that's it, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Taylor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Eastchester Community Action Partnership, the food pantries are still the first Wednesday of each month. I would just like to say thank you to the ECAP because of how many families they blessed throughout the holidays, Thanksgiving and Christmas, hundreds of families. Now that school is back in, the after-school program is back up and running. And then on the 20th of this month, the ECAP will be having their 37th Annual MLK Breakfast at the Reformed Church of Bronxville. This year's theme is a legacy of service, and the honorees are the Junior League of Bronxville and my mom Alma Lee Taylor, who was one of the three founding members of ECAP in the 60s. For ticket info, you can call ECAP at 914-337-7768. For the Tuckahoe Housing Authority, at Four Union, they started the elevator repair today. The Deputy Mayor Kara Cronin and myself were there today talking to residents, trying to let them know that whoever is in need during these possible three months, because it's going to take possibly three months to replace this elevator. So we spoke to several residents to let them know that whatever help they needed, we would be there for them. We gave them our info, and they were grateful to have help from this board. Thank you.
Okay. Deputy Mayor?
Happy New Year, everybody. The seniors are back at the Senior Center. They had a beautiful welcome-back luncheon hosted by the Chamber of Commerce, the Eastchester Tuckahoe Chamber of Commerce. Their Keller Williams and the Icon Foundation, which is led by Tuckahoe resident Sarah DeReese, presented the seniors with a check for $10,000 from their annual fundraiser in November. So I just want to say a big thank you to Sarah DeReese and the Icon Foundation and Keller Williams for their continuing support of our Tuckahoe seniors. They really go above and beyond, and without that money, the programming that the Tuckahoe seniors does would not be possible. And just because it's the beginning of the year, I'd like to give my annual plug. If you are 60 and over and interested in joining, the Tuckahoe Seniors meets on Tuesdays and Thursdays from 9:00 to 2:00 at the Assumption Hall, Assumption Church at Father Fata Hall. It's $50 to join for the whole year, and that includes all kinds of programming, educational programming, exercise classes, yoga, tai chi, zumba, dancing. They have luncheons, and much of that is included. They also go on trips, sometimes to casinos and other places. So it really is a great place to meet new people, to congregate, to make friends. If you're interested and you need more information, and if you're, if you can go online, you can find them online, Tuckahoe Seniors, but if you need more information, I can bring it to you. And if anybody wants a ride there the first time just to try it out, I'll come pick you up and we'll go. So that is the Tuckahoe Seniors. Let us know if you, it is something that is of interest to you. I want to echo trustee Gachion's sentiments and give my condolences to the Forliano family. I know that is a huge loss, and so our hearts are with you. I want to say a special shout-out to the police department. I have a neighbor who is elderly. I check in on her. When I was away last week, the police department like really stepped up and they went to go just check in on her, and they do that for a lot of our residents. So I just want to say thank you because it's nice to know that our, our loved ones and our friends and neighbors are taken care of even when we're not around. I also want to say thank you to the DPW because on Christmas Eve morning, I woke up at 6:30 in the morning, it was a Saturday morning, and our roads were bare to the ground even though there was two inches of snow on the floor. So thank you because that doesn't happen everywhere, and we know it. The Tuckahoe Zoning Board will be meeting this Wednesday at 7:30 with a work session at 6:45. There are three items on the agenda. 174 Marble Dale is the request to convert commercial space to residential. Just so everybody knows, the public hearing on this is already closed, so the board will be making a decision this, this month. And then there are two other smaller items. One is to convert attic space. The Planning Board has been adjourned for the month. And just a small update about the Comprehensive Plan. The Comprehensive Plan Committee hosted our first public forum on December 4th. It was very well-attended. It was really a robust, like fruitful conversation. I counted at one point about 65 to 68 people there. Somebody who served on two previous Comprehensive Plan Committees told me that they had, we had more people there than he ever remembered in all the meetings put together for the previous plan. So that was great, and I, we really appreciate that people came down. It was a cold night. They gave their input, they gave feedback, they, they provided fruitful ideas, and that's really what makes a Comprehensive Plan work well. So there will be additional opportunities. I believe there'll be two more meetings coming forward. There was a survey that went out before the holidays. We already had 350 responses. I'm sure there are more now. The survey has since closed. And so right now, the, the team working on that is, are, they're preparing their findings from the survey and the, and the forum, and they will report on that soon. Just a note about the Eastchester Board of Education, since Nicole is not here anymore, I will report on this. The Eastchester Board of Education has a meeting tomorrow, and they are considering two bonds. One is a mini-bond for athletics, and one is a $75 million bond for instructional purposes. So if this is of interest to you and you'd like to know more about this before you go and vote later in the spring, if these come to vote, there is a board meeting tomorrow at 7:00 p.m. And then I'd finally like to end by congratulating our newly-appointed County Executive Ken Jenkins, who is serving as county executive, and he's the first African-American to serve in that role, and just say congratulations to our new Congressman, George Latimer. All right, and that's all I have. Thank you, everybody.
I do want to start by, just hearing the trustee reports really gives you just a snapshot of how much work that this board does for you, and I want to thank the board for not counting it robbery, as the Baptists say, for doing this work. And just to let the residents know that it really just, you know, it's supposed to be a part-time job. Everyone here has a full-time job except for Daryl Taylor. He just sleeps all day because he's retired. One of the hardest-working people I know, but you know, this, it, you know, in theory, it's supposed to be a part-time job, but it really isn't because it's, it's what you make it. And everyone on this board is assigned liaison roles, and they take them seriously, and I really appreciate that because liaison roles didn't exist prior to my coming here, and so they could have said, whatever, you tell me you want me to be a liaison, I don't want to be. But they, they dive right in, they do the work, they care about their community, and I just want to thank them publicly today at the beginning of the year to say thank you so much for the work that you have done and thank you for the work that you're going to do. Thank you, trustee Gachion. Thank you, trustee Taylor, Deputy Mayor, who works tirelessly for you. Sometimes I have to put her to bed, have to go to sleep. So I appreciate all the work. We do have liaison roles. Usually at the beginning of the, the new, you know, after the reorganization meeting, we reassigned liaison roles, but a few people were ill, so they weren't at the last work session. So we will be looking at the assignments and seeing who's interested in doing what. There may be some changes. You can always go on the website and find out who's the liaison to which committees or which departments, so that if you have a question about something that's related to that, you can contact that particular trustee. And unlike other municipalities, this is a working board. Everyone here is doing something to benefit the community, and so it's not just one person doing anything. So thank you all so much for making my life easier. And what I'd like to do tonight at the beginning of the year is to sort of give a little summary on the state of the village, how we're doing, some of the things that have happened throughout the year. And as we step into 2025, I'm filled with real optimism and gratitude for the progress we've made together. As you heard during the auditor's report, there are some exciting things happening, and we're doing, we're doing well. It's an honor to reflect on our accomplishments and shared vision for continued growth and success in our community, and this past year has been marked by some, some great achievements, and I'll highlight a few of them. Under sustainability milestones, we secured a $75,000 grant to assist in the purchase of the village's first electric vehicle. First person I called when I learned this, when the village administrator called me, is I called Nicole Engelbert, trustee, former trustee. She was super excited. Our partnership with Sustainable Westchester has entered a new phase, reinforcing our commitment to a greener future, and you heard from our superintendent's report that we're always looking for ways to benefit the environment in the work that we do. Additionally, we, we have the community garden that was started by the, which scout, which scout?
Chris.
Chris Sprinkle, which really symbolizes, is, is one way that we symbolize a dedication to local sustainability. As far as infrastructure advancements, we've begun the transformation at the Depot Square thanks to a million-dollar grant from Congress. We've begun the curbing work. Some of you were sending me text messages and saying what's going on at Depot Square, so we've begun to do some of the work there. Street paving, we have street, we paved lots of streets this year as well as the previous years. This year, we paved Bella Vista, Chestnut and Coolidge, Highview, McKinley, and portions of Lincoln and Fulling, as well as the Main Street Lot, which is the last of all the lots that needed paving in the last three years. So I'm really excited that we've completed that. We also have switched from a .com email to a .gov email address, which will increase the security for our email system, and that's really important with all the, the cyber, cybersecurity issues, especially in municipalities, we're dealing with taxpayer dollars. Fiscal updates, so we've, you know, a lot of comments have come out about meters and how we've increased the meters, and you know, it's all tied together. When you hear the auditor talk about how well we're doing in terms of our finances, some of that had to do with the decision that this board made to increase the meters by a couple more quarters to, to park in Tuckahoe in order to save the, the village residents from the burden of increased, you know, exponentially increased taxes. So this year, parking revenue increased by more than $200,000 from parking lots and nearly $165,000 from meters. We have a robust fund balance, as he mentioned during his report, of $2.7 million. So we already discussed why this is so important for cash flow, for a good credit rating, a bond rating in the municipalities, and for ensuring that we have, if there's an emergency, to be able to take care of that. In terms of community development, the much anticipated library is opened, and there was a lot of work that went on this year with that. So I appreciate the pulling out of hair, the, the library staff, the village administrator, some board members, because we had a lot of glitches throughout the year with the contractor, with work that you anticipate is going to get done a certain way, and then you, you scratch the surface and there's more to be done. So we are really excited about the library. Thank you so much, Swadish, for putting your heart and soul into this. We celebrated the retirement of Elaine, as you know, affectionately known as Laney to many, who received the prestigious Marble Award, the second of its kind in Tuckahoe for her dedication to her community. So thank you, Elaine, for being here as well. And as far as flooding and resilience, the Bronx River Study is complete, and we've made improvements on Marble Dale Road and other flood zone areas in the village to mitigate against water overflow. And we've participated in several meetings with the county to discuss solutions. We also welcomed the new county flooding czar, who will collaborate with us on some long-term solutions. The county started a countywide hazard mitigation plan, which includes a Tuckahoe-specific appendix to be used for new flooding reconnaissance plan to be developed by the New Office of Flood Mitigation and Resiliency. And we'll work with them over the next year to ensure that our problem areas are identified and addressed and that we're not forgotten in Tuckahoe. A huge thank you to Frank DeMarco for working on getting FEMA reimbursements for flooding events. I think, David, am I correct? I don't remember. You told me $58,000 we've gotten reimbursed. So again, you know, the, we are applying for grants constantly, and, and I have to say, Swadish and Frank and the chief, and they'll talk a little bit about this, are constantly looking for ways to be able to offset tax, you know, the tax burden on residents. And one of the ways that we do that is by applying for grants. So thank you for that, Frank, for the $58,000 grants that you've applied for and received for FEMA for flood-related issues. Our online tax payments are now available and streamlining services for our residents. There was, that was a, a big request of our Suzanne servant, who's I'm sure is on with us, and so now she has the opportunity to pay taxes online, which we really should have, you know, had that, we really should have gotten it done. A new contract for health insurance promises improved benefits over time. Thank you, David, and the team for working on this, this transfer over. I've gone through changes in health insurance policies at my other job and gone through changes in health insurance policies at my other job, and it is, it is really a burden. So I know it takes a lot of work to do that. So thank you. And our meetings, these meetings, you know, our TVs aren't working right now. We can't see the meeting. Our meetings will be upgraded. Our AV equipment will be upgraded, so that we'll have a new equipment for our meetings in the future. And some community engagement and events, the Tuckahoe Challenge yielded a record breaking number of runners this year. I think we almost had three, seven hundred participants, and brought in about twenty-five thousand dollars, if I'm not, if I'm not mistaken. And that project also helped to support the library renovations. We had the first pizza cookoff, which was hosted in Tuckahoe, sponsored by the General Rosa Pope Foundation and the Pizza Cookoff Association. They've already contacted me to tell me that they'd like to do it again next year. It was a huge success. And I even took the pizza cookoff class, really because I wanted to eat the pizza, but I pretended to want to be a judge, and then realized I had to be stuck indoors while everyone was outside having fun. But that was also a fun event that we had. We had, you know, movie nights, thanks to our Deputy Mayor. Thank you to John Galuzzi for putting his heart and soul into the fireworks show, which had a great attendance, as well as Winterfest, and the creepy candy crawl that's going strong. I believe this year, we probably broke a few records in terms of attendance. So thank you to Deputy Mayor Kara Cronin, who's always thinking of, hmm, what else can I add? And and David cringes. So just looking to the future, as we look ahead, a significant step that we've taken to plan for Tuckahoe's future was the establishment of the Comprehensive Plan Committee, who will work with the community to guide us in setting priorities for the future. And the Deputy Mayor already mentioned that the first public forum was held on December fourth to get input from key stakeholders. And there will be two more forums scheduled. I really want to thank the seventy people, that's ten percent of our residents, showed up, came out, and were engaged in the process, you know, voiced their ideas and their concerns, and their vision for the future. And that really helps to shape this plan for Tuckahoe. So I encourage those of you who were not able to make the first one, if you can make the second, do so. If you can't make the second, make the third. But it's your community, and you should show up and say what it is that you think you want to see in the future. Depot Square and the traffic light infrastructure upgrades will also be completed soon. This is very exciting. That light that seems to be the bane of everyone's existence for decades seems like our chief has found some solutions, and he will come up and talk a little bit about that, to enhance the quality of life. I tell people, this is a first world problem, but it's a problem nonetheless. So we want to, you know, we want to work to take care of that. These successes and initiatives are only possible because of the hard work and cooperation of village employees, volunteers, and residents. And I really want to end this board. I want to thank everyone for making our community the community that it is. It's really an enviable one. I have friends who come and visit here, and they're like, you know, why are your streets so smooth? And, you know, it makes me smile, because it lets me know that we're putting our money where our mouths are. That means we're taking care of the community. We're making sure that your infrastructure is taken care of, that your garbage is picked up, that your snow is plowed, and that the police is vigilant to to serve and to protect the community. So together, we'll continue to build a community that values sustainability, inclusivity, and progress. And let us embrace the new year with hope and determination, knowing that brighter days for Tuckahoe are ahead. Wishing you all and your families a happy, healthy, and prosperous new year. And that will take us to the second opportunity to address the board, if there's anyone that has any. Hi, Elaine.
Hello.
Your name and address, please?
Yes, Lynn Provenzano, Eleven River Street, Tuckahoe, New York. I want to, I'm glad that you brought it up, because I was unable to be here for the December meeting. That day, my mom went to the hospital. Thank God, she's doing better. But I want to thank the board again for honoring me with the Marble Award. And in rereading the qualifications of the award, durable, strong, tolerant, diverse, and historic value, I'm deeply moved and humbled to be nominated. It has been an honor to serve this community as a librarian for the past twelve years, and I'll be back there part time starting this week. And if, as you state, I have demonstrated a remarkable ability to both preserve local history and educate the local community on Tuckahoe's rich historic and cultural heritage, nothing can make me prouder. As a volunteer with the Tucko History Committee, and as Education Chair with the Friends of the Ward House, I'm honored to work with local historians, teaching high school students about the Route Twenty-two Echo Corridor on Route Twenty-two, Echo Corridor, from which we have received funding from the Youth Community Fund and Westchester County legislators. We just sent a check, a five hundred dollar check, I gave it to Ryan, for the Tucko History Committee, for Nick's help in guiding those students with research. Next week, I'll be meeting with the Eastchester Schools, who want to learn more about the Echo Corridor Local History Project opportunities. We know that the seventeen ninety Ward House is the crown jewel of this Route Twenty-two Echo Corridor. As many of our high school students have learned, working on other Route Twenty-two sites, much of the Echo Corridor history emanates from the Ward House. Besides the seventeen seventy-seven British attack on that sacred ground, where Captain Samuel Crawford and our first veterans lost their lives, Tucko Marble was also first discovered on ward property, and the first Catholic Mass was celebrated at the Ward House in eighteen fifty for Irish quarry workers, three years before the construction of Immaculate Conception Church. It was also a post office, stagecoach stop, and thriving community and education center. Now, Westchester County has recognized its importance. How very exciting that over two point five million dollars has been allocated to purchase and restore the Ward House. You asked the Friends for one million. And thanks to former County Executive George Latimer, County Executive Ken Jenkins, and legislator Judith Holstein, it has more than doubled. We thank you for your support. The community is behind us. Now all parties can work together to bring this plan to fruition, so Eastchester, Tuckahoe, and Bronxville can benefit from this treasured landmark as living history, and the Ward House can take its rightful place in the Two-Fiftieth Revolutionary Westchester Celebrations in twenty twenty-six. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Sal Provenzano, Eleven River Street. Mayor Dino, I agree with your remarks, a hundred percent. We are so blessed to be Tuckahoe residents. I mean, I, I've been in all three. I've lived in all three of the municipalities. And I have to tell you that that Tuckahoe is, just has the warmest spot in my heart. I, I, I do think that that one of the things that really occurred because of the, of the hard work of this of this board, and the hard decisions that you made in order to make the Ward House a landmark, there's no way that George Latimer and and Judith Holstein would have allocated two point five five million dollars to the Ward House on behalf of Tuckahoe, if they didn't think that your leadership was there, and they were, you were going to be behind them. So I have to tell you that really, that is one of the crown jewels of what happened in this past twenty twenty-four. And it was really, if if they didn't have confidence in you, they would have, there's no way that that would have been in that budget. So I have to tell you, I have to thank you from the bottom of my heart, that that Tuckahoe has stood up. You know, Kara and I have had conversations about about how much money was needed. I was knocked off of my feet when I saw that there was two point five million dollars in there. That was the full budget that we put together for the purchase and restoration of that of that Ward House. And there's still monies that are out there, once the Ward House then gets national and state landmark status. So again, I thank you from the bottom of my heart. If it wasn't for Tuckahoe, that Ward House would be down. There's no way that 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 Ward House would have been, would have been up there if there was not a law in place, and if the led, if if the trustees and the mayor didn't vote five zero in favor of it. So I can never thank you enough, and God bless you. Thanks.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Hi, Kreshvansky, again, three twenty-eight Columbus Avenue. I just wanted to take a moment to publicly thank Chief Rota and the Tucko Police Department for a process they have in place called Dark House Rounds, which is great. I've got relatives that live in Harrison and Putnam, and you explained Dark House Rounds to them, and they're amazed. I think it's a comfort for the resident where they're, when they're away, and I think it's a comfort for their neighbors, too. I mean, I've got our house technologically built out to the health for security, but there's nothing as successful as police presence. And I'm a firm believer in not waiting for the horses to escape before you close the barn doors. And I got to tell you, it's fantastic.
Yeah, we do have a great police department. So I got a little ahead of myself and moved on to second opportunity to address the board. But in my zeal to have a comprehensive state of the village, I did ask the chief and the superintendent of DPW to also provide their their state of their departments for twenty twenty-four. So I'm going to ask the chief to come up now. Chief, I'm very sorry. I know you're not feeling great. And here I have you sitting around waiting.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, so for twenty twenty-four, we had a lot of movement with personnel. We had the retirements of Francisco Ramirez, Emily Ankowski, and a resignation of from Daniel Bellis, who went to the Fire Department. New officers, we were lucky to hire some very good trained officers. One is P. L. David Ventura, who transferred here from the NYPD. P. L. Jessica Ventura, I'm sorry, Jessica Gonzalez, who transferred as well from Middletown. And we just hired, as you saw, probation, probationary police officer Melvin Banks. We also added a wonderful addition of canine therapy, the first in Westchester County, sixth in the state, Eddie. He's done more than we ever expected. We're looking to grow in the communities around us, to have other municipalities join on board. But when I tell you the positive things this dog has done, it's a great thing. We received many grants. I'll just run down some of the, we received the Great Technology Grant of a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars from Governor Holkel, Car Seat Safety Grant. We receive a federal Patrick Leahy Police Officer Vest Grant. That's for reimbursement of our bulletproof vests. We receive money from the Community Fund, National Night Out from the county legislator, Governor's Traffic Safety. That's for our speed details, our cell phone enforcements, things like that. We also receive money from the Westchester Office of Family Services. So as you can see, there's a lot of grant writing that goes on, and those are the grants we're approved for. A lot of times, we'll apply for grants, and we don't get them. But we just put our heads down, and we keep working, because if you don't ask, you won't get. So we're always applying for grants when we see them come up. And as we know, David, they're very entailed sometimes. But we do, we submit, and we hope for the best. And sometimes we get surprised. Some of the community events we do, and again, this is something to be said about our department, events that we reach out to the community for pizza with police, comb with a cop, National Night Out, the Police Special Olympics Torch Run, Bicycle Safety Day, Turkey Giveaway during the holidays, and the Chili Cookoff. The twenty twenty-five is going to bring training, training, training. We are going to train our officers with the best and foremost training we have, keep up the dates on policies, procedures, technology. Overall, we had a great year last year. We also went paperless for our day to day paperwork within the department, which was a great success. It just saves time, saves time. It's also more accountable. We're able to track things much easier. So we upgraded that area, and also scheduling wise, paperless as well. We're looking forward to the new year also with some more technology. We're adding LPRs, license plate readers on the top of Winter Hill with overview cameras. We're also adding license plate readers on the bottom of Midland Avenue at Winter Hill. We're going to be adding some overview cameras in the area of Crestwood and Depot Square for the storefronts. And also, we're adding the technology, as we spoke of, Marble Dell has been installed last week, two weeks ago, I'm sorry. They were on a two week break for the holidays. You'll see that candy cane arm on top, and those are the street sensors we've been talking about. So that's up. It's supposed to be programmed as of today. They were supposed to be out there programming it. So that'll be the first one. Again, these traffic sensors replace the loops in the blacktop. So when we replace the blacktop now, or Con Ed comes in and decides to rip up our blacktop, we don't have to worry about the sensors in the blacktop. And again, this is first started with Westchester County. You'll see them on a lot of the county roadways. You won't see many of these in the local towns. So we saw the technology, and we ran with it, because we saw the success that Westchester County had on the major thoroughfares. And what it does is it senses the vehicles. It prevents the vehicles from idling, especially during off peak times, where if you're sitting there, and there's no traffic coming the other way, it will send you. It enhances traffic flow. It does a world of things. So now that Marble Dell is installed, we moved on to do preliminary work in Depot Square here. Where that's going to be our next one in the coming weeks. We have to run some wire and conduit, and we will be up and running in Depot Square. And that includes Columbus Avenue, the Main Street Bridge, and Scarsdale Road, and Lake Avenue.
Yay!
Yes. So we, we're looking forward to that and getting that up and running. We will be out in the community as well when the weather changes. We want to be out talking with the community, hearing feedback. Again, community policing requires input from the community. We are out and about. We're out talking to people, but we also need your input. If you see something, say something. If you don't feel something's right, please call us. We are here. We are, we do never feel burdened, and we always want to help. Time and time again, tips have been called in by residents that actually have solved crimes. So your input, along with this technology, along with our officers being out and about and deterring crime from happening, is key to keeping this village safe. Our crime statistics are coming in. We'll have the crime report out for next month, but so far, everything looks great. Post COVID, our numbers are extremely down. This year, it looks like it's better than last year. So overall, it's a bright future for the village, for the village police department, and in general. We look forward to twenty twenty-five, and I want to wish everyone a great, wonderful, and healthy year.
Thank you, chief. Go get some rest. And I'll also ask our superintendent of DPW to give a summary of twenty twenty-four for DPW.
Okay, everybody, you know, DPW has changed over the years, and because of the many facets and titles this department maintains, we have, over the years, developed a department with a multitude of knowledge, skills, and trained individuals that take on an unprecedented amount of daily seasonal services for the village of Tuckahoe. All it is to better that, all it is to better the community that we live in. And, you know, we do a lot of the work ourselves. So we do a lot of repair work. We do a lot of carpentry, electrical work. So a lot of this work is overseen and done in house. I just want to let the residents know that. We had a new hire this year, Nico Vincent Guerra, and I hope I got that right. He was hired as a labor and working in sanitation. We had one promotional position for Joseph Marzella as a road maintenance foreman, who has been with us as a highway labor over the years. He's, he owns a wealth of knowledge, and he's there to maintain our roads, sidewalks, curbs, infrastructure, to make sure that Con Edison, Violia, and all these other companies are doing right by us. You know, projects for two thousand twenty-four, some of the projects, but not limited to, of course, Main Street Parking Lot renovation and paving, the implementation of vehicle charging stations, which we completed at the beginning of this year, community garden at Pleasant Avenue in conjunction with the Boy Scout, Chris Sprinkle, and his group, assistance with the library renovation, Midland Avenue sanitary sewer upgrade. Midland Avenue sanitary sewer upgrade, GPS mapping of all of our infrastructure, rebuilding 75 stormwater catch basins throughout the year, planting 78 trees this year, the issuance of over 90 street sidewalk and tree permits, responding to over 45 sewer emergency calls, stormwater catch basin grills. So what we're going to do this year, which is new on our project, is the implementation for the stormwater catch basin grills. A lot of the grills are open when you see them on the curb side. So what we're going to do is fabricate grills that go on the front of them to prevent all the floatables to go into our waterways, waterways like bottles and cans and debris so we could better maintain that. One of the grants that we have secured covered the expense of the machine and a lot of the material. And managing our facilities, you know, the community center, Village Hall, and Depot, I'm sorry, and DPW. Sanitation and recycling totals for 2024, household waste, 2,612 tons for the years, commingable containers, 241 tons, and that's bottles and cans. Cardboard and commingable paper, 445 tons. Yard waste, 900 tons. Metals, 65 tons. E-waste, 18 tons. Food scrap recycling has climbed up to an enormous 70 tons this year. Grants and assistance. New York State Extreme Winter Recovery Appropriation was $15,710. New York State Department of Transportation, CHIPS reimbursements for our paving is $103,232. Pave New York's appropriation is $12,440. POP, pave our potholes grant, $32,503. Soil and Water Conservation Grant, which is secured for $25,000, still waiting to fund it, and that was the funding for the machinery for the stormwater catch basin grills. Nicerda EV Charging Station Grant for $125,000. Nicerda EV Vehicle Grant. I didn't secure a lot of these grants. I mean, I have to say that David is a big part of all this. You know, I'm just explaining what we were receiving and what we have secured. FEMA Stormwater Ophelia Recovery Grant, it's $58,000. Midland Street Sewer Upgrades, $150,000. Main Street Park Grant, $175,000. And some of our educational and public outreach is annual Get Acquainted with your DPW Day, annual Christmas Toy Drive, Arbor Day involvement with local schools, involvement with the Tree Committee, involvement with the Environmental Committee, and Department of Public Works educational projects that we have done over the years. For example, Rain Garden, BioSwells environmental stormwater containment system before it reaches our Bronx River waterway, and we contain a lot of the contaminants before it enters into our waterway. And that's really all you have. A more descriptive DPW annual report will be available at the end of the month at our DPW website. I'm just waiting for final numbers to come in. And that's more of a descriptive annual report.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yep. Good information. So is there anyone else who would like to address the board, going back to public comments?
Hi, everybody. Rita Mastroparadino, 261 Dante Avenue. I'm here to say thank you to the village of Tukahoe for allowing us to host our 13th Annual Forever Rallying for Regina Blood Drive at the Tukahoe Community Center on February 1st from 10 to 4:00. It's also a Gift of Life Awareness Day and a raffle for the American Cancer Society and a bake sale. So there's something for everyone. Some people don't donate blood, they can buy raffle tickets or enjoy something from the bake sale. As you know, blood donations are crucial for saving lives, whether in emergencies or for ongoing medical treatments. Every single donation makes a difference, and there's no substitute for human blood. We encourage all healthy adults between the ages of 18 and 65 to consider donating, but check to see if you're eligible. And actually donors as young as 16 can donate with parents' permission and as old as 76 with doctors' permission. To register, you can use a link that's on, we have a beautiful flyer that the New York Blood Center made for us. There's a QR code here, which you can just hover your phone over it and go right to the site and sign up. Or I can give you the link, or I can help you sign up, or you can call to sign up, or you can walk in. So walk-ins are more than welcome. It's good to have a lot of people sign up in advance so that we can be more efficient in serving everyone, but we always welcome walk-ins. And Tukahoe's always been so great about participating. We have, everybody's talking about our community, and I agree with everybody how wonderful it is here. Anyway, I want to say special thank you to you, Mayor Andino, and the whole village of Tukahoe, especially John Galuzzi, who is always the most enthusiastic supporter and helps us and reminds me, you know, calls me to say, we've got the date on the calendar, you know, when are they coming? And he's always great. And the commitment from the community means a lot to all of us, our group, our team, which is a Relay for Life team for the American Cancer Society. And, you know, we just welcome everyone to come. It's kind of like a party, I know it's a blood drive, but we really have a good time. We celebrate everything, right? Our community and, and what we're doing for, for the good causes that we have. Anyway, thank you very much.
Do you have flyers to leave?
I have flyers to leave, I have posters, and I have little tabletop cards, tents, I think they call them, and I can leave them.
So you can give them to Camille, and we will make sure that the community has access.
Thank you very much. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Hello, everybody. This is Samantha, 72 Main Street. And adding to the achievements and accomplishments of 2024 was that Tukahoe had its first ever Tukahoe Pride Celebration. And I just want to say thank you so much for this wonderful village and everybody for actually making it happen. It's so, in this crazy world that sometimes exalts bullies and bigots, it's nice to know that celebrations of love just become so much more important for all of our care and wellbeing for everybody, whether you identify or not. So I just want to thank the Tukahoe Pride Committee and of course, everybody in the village for their support. It was a great celebration, and we look forward to this year's.
Thank you. Anyone else? We're having our own party here.
I know. Nancy Hytenorday, Consulate Drive. I just wanted to thank you. I've had to go to Atlantic City on business, and when I came back, the person who drove had an electric vehicle. And, you know, she could, she got, we got from Atlantic City, but she needed some power. And it was so great that I could say to her, I said, you know, we have charging stations right here. And she charged her car, we went to a local restaurant and had some tea and dessert, and I paid for it, and it wasn't that much money. It was, I was like, oh, wow, this is really great that we could just, she could just do that. So I wanted to thank you for all the stations.
That's awesome.
We had. Thank you.
Awesome. See, David? They're using the, they're using them.
Okay, so the same way that kids look forward to Santa for Christmas, I look forward to the candy cane lights that go down Main Street in Tukahoe. I love it. They're still there, thank goodness. It's the most beautiful Main Street, iconic Main Street in the United States of America. And I really believe that. And thank you so much, and congratulations to you, this board. You should be very proud of your leadership because if you sit here and listen to all of the reports and think about the miseries and places where nothing is going right, welcome to Tukahoe and thank you for your service.
Thank you. Yeah, enjoy, enjoy the candy canes because they're coming down soon, right, Frank? They won't be there till February 1st. It's beautiful. Okay, so I think everyone has spoken, or maybe not. Is anyone else would like to address the board on any agenda or non-agenda items? Anyone on Zoom? Trustee Taylor is already interrupting meetings, just been here for one meeting? Right ahead, Mike.
Really, really quick, I know I mentioned the ECAP's MLK Breakfast on the 20th. I just want to say that it's the only fundraiser that the Eastchester Community Action Partnership has in it for the entire year. And with all of the good work that they do, the, when the people show up and help them on that MLK Day, it's an awesome event. We were worried last year because I think we went three years without having it about the attendance, and like Tukahoe does, they were amazing, they showed up. I think we had over 200 people, and we hope that we have that kind of turnout again. Every dime, every penny that goes to ECAP, believe me, it is spent properly, and you are blessing this community mightily. Thank you.
Yep, and the chefs who cook breakfast, they're all like world-renowned chefs, so get there. Okay, Tukahoe, thank you all so much. Have a good night, we will see you in February.